Auto order of the planning commission, regular section agenda. Charles Civic Center 500 Gaswell Avenue, January 7th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Stanford Sound Hall. Diane Diannika.
Good morning.
Koya here.
Roseman.
Do we have a form? Can you all stand for multiple comments and flag your witness? Join me in the pledge.
My pledge alleges to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any other comments?
We do not. I'm over.
We have the consent agenda. Do I have approval of the agenda format? So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes. Any corrections to the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes of the separate call up.
I second. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reports.
So, we have an annual report. 2018 annual report, from January 2018 to December 2018. So this is just, I mean, should I have to read it? Is that?
No, you could highlight it. I would say that for some of the newer people here, this is a requirement in the code. And we've been doing this for eight years or so. It looks like, I look at it, there are some things that were added, and I think it's pretty good. It's a historical perspective of the past year, and it has to go to town council. So it should show what we've done. It talks about the commission members, the staff that supports the commission, then it talked about things that happened in general that are planning commission interest, if you will, like Old Cave Charles Road, new construction, new commercial stuff, great. And about four years ago, we had put in there a summary of permits and projects, and those are in there. I think they're great. I don't. I can't, I questioned last year the number of new construction homes, and I think they changed the feedback and changed it because it was only like four. And I said, I can't believe that. I can't read it. So, but it shows that, I saw it in here somewhere, the number of homes in the historic district and then the number of homes in Bay Creek. So that's, that is good. So, ten in the historic district, these were permitted, and then six in, six in Bay Creek. Any questions? Mr. Planner, do you have any additional?
I do not, no. That was good on you.
Anybody? Any commissioners have questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve, send this to approve the report as written and to send to, forward to town council. So move. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
All right. So the next one we have is capital projects. Just requested, just an update on what capital projects have happened since the 2016 conference of plan. So the phase two of the multi-use trail, it hasn't been closed out, but the work has been completed, as you're aware. And then phase three, the design work has been done, fourth brake water, design for the fourth brake water has been completed, the core of engineers has completed the review, and it's estimated we go out and bid, for bid in January, so this month. And then, this isn't a town capital project, but the Harrah Raffsner's work was completed by VDOT, which of course impacts our town trillions. Yeah, it's about, if y'all had any others that you thought of that were on this report?
No, I can't think of any. It's good because that helps us with the capital, on the comprehensive plan and rewrite, so. Good. Any discussion, questions? All right. Next one is the, the parking unfinished business, parking joint working group update recommendations.
So, the parking ad hoc committee, there are, so there's actually four instead of five recommendations. So one recommendation is, the number four recommendation on the staff report is to, I'll just go through them. So number one, a recommendation for the parking ad hoc committee for consideration of the following four items excluding one. So replacing reverse angle parking with front end parking where reverse angle parking is currently located on Mason Avenue, and change the angle from a 60 degree angle to a 45 degree angle. That's the first recommendation. Second is to add parallel parking stripes on the north side of Mason Avenue between Fig Street and Peach Street. Third, add parallel parking stripes on the north side of Mason Avenue from Harbor Street to Bay Avenue. The fourth one is just, it says install better directional signage for the strawberry park, strawberry closet parking lot, but that's just going to be something that Main Street is going to talk more about. It's not part of the recommendations for this. And then, fourth recommendation for planning commission is to add one handicap parking space in each of the zero block and the 100 block in Mason Avenue. So just a description of what had been discussed previously. So, the working group held a meeting on December 10th, they discussed the possibility of parking recommendations to town council. There's going to be, there's a lot talked about, you know, the history of reverse angle parking, why that is, and one thing to highlight is that, so the conference of plan specifically stated discussion about the reverse angle parking in conjunction with complete street design, but Mason Avenue is not a complete street design. And just to specify, it wasn't, it wasn't because of safety concerns with the parallel parking that was currently there. It was just something to add to the parking, that was really the idea behind adding reverse angle parking as opposed to parallel parking. Let's see, and then, the 60 degree to 45 degree is just more of a safety issue. If it's pulling in parking, it allows you to have more vision as you're pulling back out. So that's where that comes from. The length wouldn't see much in the length on Mason Avenue, nothing significant. And then with the addition of, on the north side of Mason Avenue between Fig Street and Peach Street, the addition of parallel parking there would provide approximately 38 spaces. There are a lot of curb cuts currently there, former curb cuts that were used in the past but are not currently being used for like old driveways, et cetera. And in discussion with Dale Pucey, he's an area land use engineer with VDOT, he stated that if this is an approved thing, if y'all want to go forward with this in town council agreement, the plan that we would provide to VDOT could show those curb cuts being covered with parallel parking, but there has to be an explanation of how other access into those.
To residential.
To the residential.
Or commercial.
Or commercial, yeah. So, what other access is available other than those curb cuts? So if, if we were to be able to cover those curb cuts, it would be 38 parking spaces that we could provide, or that there would be 46 parking spaces that we could provide. If we are not able to do that, it would be 30 parking spaces, additional parking spaces that we provide in that area. And then, the Harbor Street to Bay Avenue would allow, parallel parking on the north side of Mason would allow 18 additional parking spaces there. Also reached out to Dale Pucey about handicap accessible spaces. He had mentioned that there's really no standard there, but that they recommend 4% of the parking that you have, and that would come to about 45 spaces with all the additions, the proposed additions, if those are accounted for. And this is just phase one, there's future phases with more.
At the present time, how many handicap spots do we have on Mason?
Two.
Two?
Two spots.
There's one in front of one tree, and the other one's in front of a ground dog. Okay, so let's, this is for the commissioners here. So let's review from last month. One question that came out of the commission was to find out the incidents, if any incidents had occurred. Saw at this last subcommittee meeting of the parking group, Chief Pruitt was there, and he had said that from the time that reverse angle parking had been in place, we had had two incidents. There was a third that was, had just happened, but nothing, there was an incident, a reportable incident, was 1,500 or more in damage. And the question was asked about, well, what about less than that? There's no way, there's no way to do that. I mean, yeah, you could, I mean, somebody, now, he did say that they are, they have created a new form to take that into consideration, so, but, really, there's no big thing. So the reverse angle parking, and we asked the question, and it's the same thing that, you know, we've had accidents with parallel parking, so anyway. The other quest, one of the other questions were eliminating spaces near high traffic, high density traffic. Well, with the, going from the 45, or going from the 45 to the 60 degree, if you read it in here, you're, we're going to lose about seven, six to seven spaces. And that's because, you know, I mean, that can be done, you should be able to still see, you know, corners and whatnot. So, I'm not sure, I'm really not sure personally, like if somebody needs to have a view shed of a corner, how that, how that would figure into, I mean, with, you know, with the parking as we've discussed, having exactly the same spots, just reversing down. The back, the back end parking right now is 45 degrees heading. So just look at it, turned, and it's going to be, it's going to be more slant, more slanted toward the curb, right? It was in here, and it was about the curb cuts on the north side from Peach to, or Plum to Fig. I kind of got the impression that, he said, okay, as long as there's access to all the lots, really, should be access to all the lots there, so, and we would be good to go. He wants, they would like to see, they would like to see the schematics of that before they would approve, so, you know, I mean, we can go for, that would be on the town to do that, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm going to draw the lines and show how the curbs, how the curbs, curb cuts would be covered.
So, so as a recap, what would go, what we would as a commission do was ask is to look at this over, discuss it, approve it, and forward it on to town council for their review. So what we would be reviewing and forwarding would be reverse angle parking to front end parking at the same, the same places, okay? We're adding.
Change the angle.
Yeah, change the angle to 60 degree angle.
No, from 60 to 45.
No, it's, yeah, that's, no.
From 60 to 45.
So you have a better view coming, backing out.
Yeah, because 45 would be closer to the curb.
Right. Is that right? Is that right?
45 to 60, I thought. Change from 45 to.
To 60, that's what I thought.
Okay, so then we need to.
I thought, I was thinking the same thing, but I thought, well.
Because it's currently 45.
Right.
So it depends.
You're right.
It's changing from 45 to 60 degrees.
Right.
We showed the pictures, we showed the pictures of Virginia Beach, that 60 degree angle.
Right, but then, then we've got to change the language in here, because you say you have better visibility backing up.
You do have, you do have, well.
45.
No, you don't.
Well, that's what it says.
Yeah, that's it.
I think that, I think there's, I think there's a mistake in this, the only thing that's wrong in here is the 60 and 45 need to be reversed.
All right, so just answer the question, if I go to what we're proposing, do I have better visibility backing up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I suppose, theoretically, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I have the same problem, but I just thought geometrically, maybe instead of thinking in terms of the line, it would be 270, was somebody was using a 360 straight up and down and measuring that way or something, so that could explain, the reference point might have been different from what we were thinking and what.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're, I hear what you're saying, yeah. It is kind of confusing, which way is the 60 degrees? You've got 90 degrees, you know, straight in, right?
Yeah.
And then, 45 is halfway between 90 and zero, well, the 60 is going toward the curb, right?
Ah. See, that's.
That makes sense. That makes sense, sorry.
That's right.
All right. Depends, yeah, that's, that's.
Thank you, Bill.
Either way, either way is right, depending on what you reference.
Yeah.
But you would have a better view, because, and that's why, why you're losing more spaces, because you're pushing it.
Yeah, I like, I like. Just to add something about the Virginia Beach piece. The very next day went down to Virginia Beach to a spotting question, and the little, you know, on an unscientific experiment, couldn't for sure say, oh yes, the visibility is better. But what was obvious is that the size of the vehicles was far bigger factor in terms of blocking visibility than changing the angle of the space. So when we go, if we, if we go to change the angle, it's not going to do anything at present with having, if you're in a smaller car, having bigger cars around you. If you're in a big car high up, you're on, you're in, no problem. So, and according to Chief Pruitt, there's not much we can do about it, but then the previous, the former mayor said, well, it could be changed through the general assembly, and that's as far as it got, and I don't want to get this thing dragged out in time and all like that, but that's the feedback. Go ahead.
Sorry.
What general assembly?
The Virginia General Assembly.
Is doing what?
Could, if you wanted to change it, you know, otherwise I was saying it's impossible, you have to allow mixed, you know, sized cars to be parked along that area. That was, that's the other thing.
Well, yeah, you're not, you're not trying to say that you would limit the parking space to ten.
That it would be, that it could be segregated. That's, you know, that's like I said, that would have to be done through, and it would only be done because that's the only way that you could issue, address an issue of safety. I mean, at this point, moving, making that angle change would make it cosmetic for some of the cars, possibly for the biggest cars with the highest, sitting highest up, that would probably improve the visibility. That's all. That's all, just, it's about safety, and the fact of life, what's beside you when you, at this point, we're going to be backing out from parking space, if you've got, if you've got big SUVs on either side of you, it's going to be a while before you can see anything.
But doesn't it make the cars coming down the street see the brake lights sooner? They would be.
More so at night, yeah.
Well, you mean the day, but at least it would, they would stop because they could see you starting to pull out.
Well, the brake lights, the backup lights.
Backup lights, sorry.
I'm just mentioning that, that, you know, I don't think at this point it's something you seriously consider, but, you know, ultimately, if we still see that there's problems backing, I mean, backing out now, and instead of just going up our hands, we'd have to see just how much, following up on that comment, which I didn't do, you know, is it, is it really impossible, or could it be done, and has it been done in any other place?
Okay, so. Go ahead.
I'm probably getting ahead of you, but we're trying to grab some of these things now before the next meeting and move them on while we, in the next meeting, if we go past, is that what you have in mind?
Again, the town manager, the former town planner said, you know, we need to get this right, and the time, the time factor is, you know, it'd be nice to do it, but, you know, we've got to get it right. So, I don't know if we approve this, if we would be able to get into the agenda packet for town council this month, but, you know, but again, he said that the likelihood of this happening, it wouldn't happen, the changes wouldn't happen until after the season's over this year. Okay, I didn't get to finish, I didn't get to finish what I, I got to the angle parking, and that's where I forgot this thing, so, rest of the thing is, is the parallel parking, additional parallel parking from Bay, I mean, from Harbor to Bay, and then the additional parallel parking from Peach to, Peach to Fig.
It's not so much adding addition, we can park there now.
Right.
We just want it.
No, right, but you know, this way you have the lines, and people park between the lines, you know, and then there would be one park, one handicap parking space in zero block of Mason and one in the 100 block of Mason.
And you've got some boats that park in Mason between Fig and Peach, so you can draw stripes, but you may have still some problems with the boats parking.
That's, that's a separate issue.
That's correct, that's correct. So these areas are still parking spaces which are being used, so it really doesn't add 38 spaces, and if theoretically, if the cars were closer together, then the spaces, you know, indicate we're losing spaces, but just so everybody's clear on what this is going to do, it sounds like a good thing to do.
I have a question, just a clarification. So, this is new to me, hearing that this won't change until after the season, because we've been pushing pretty hard to make sure that that did happen for the season. If it is left as it is, can people just either do what they're doing now, which is pull in, we'll back in, and we just don't ticket? Is there a way to get through the season and not recommend it? I just really hate that we will put this all the way off throughout the season.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I'm just paraphrasing what the town manager said.
That's correct.
He said that, he said, you know, just knowing the way VDOT works, even if we get this stuff in now, there's no, there's nothing that says that they'll, they'll have it.
At least hold us all along, if we got it done by January, we should be able to do it by the beginning of the season, that's what we've been talking about.
Well, I mean, if it, if it works, I mean, that's great.
Yeah, I had not heard that from him, because I've heard the same caution.
I mean, he's been working with us on the part of the mayor since the beginning, and that's what we've been talking about. If we got it in by January, which is why I'm kind of pushing the phase separately.
I mean, we, it's based on their priorities and, you know, yeah, so, I mean, hey, I think he was just trying to be, yeah, he just wanted, didn't want to, and everybody think, oh, it's going to be done before the season starts, and then, and then, well, I wasn't done, you know?
Is the other option of, of the plan being, if the drive can't be done, can the plan be, be that?
That's, that's, that, that is not, that, I don't think that's a planning commission, planning commission thing, whether they pull in, back, do reverse angle parking or front end parking from the old reverse angle slots, that's, that's not, that's not in our purview moment.
And I bet that it would not occur if VDOT has approved and signed say backing parking.
Yeah, but if VDOT doesn't ticket, and if the police don't ticket, then it's not.
Okay, well, then we shouldn't have a rule. All I'm saying, if VDOT has approved it, we have proposed it, they approved it, and we have it.
Now, I, you know, I was told that previous administrations and whatnot, you know, after this first study, that, you know, they kind of said, hey, no tickets, but that's, we don't get into that, so, I mean, it's not in our plan.
That's not what's happening, the tickets are definitely.
I would have very good experience. If there's, if y'all discuss, when y'all discuss it and you decide that this is a good idea, and you would want to take it to council, it wouldn't hurt to, to take it to council, see what they say, and then get the application in sooner rather than.
I mean, no, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that'd be on, that's going to be on you.
That's up to you to approve.
That's on you.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, can you, if we approve this tonight as, as we just stated.
As amended.
As amended.
Right.
Can this, will this be able to be in the, the town council packet for January? I mean, the town council packet is the third Thursday of the month, right?
I'm the one doing it, so I can see, as long as I can get my stuff done here, mind you, I have other meetings.
I understand, but you have, you, you provide, you provide the input for it, yeah.
They do, but they also like to see the minutes of approval on everything, and I do my best to try to do it the next day, so if anyone asks about the video I have then, so we can try.
All right. And as far as person hired goes, that's it, it's just you, you two, you're it, you're the planning, you're the planning workforce, okay?
We have, I have six other meetings that I work myself, so along with Zach.
It looks like you do the work with a lot more people, but okay.
I just want to make sure that we're right on the 60 degree, 45 angle, right?
Bill, you're right. He was in Virginia Beach, I was in Virginia Beach, I drive on that street 100 times a year, I know the degrees.
Okay, all right.
And we know we all want, I mean, which way we want the angle to go.
So, so, we have, we have a council member on board here on the commission, and they can explain this at the town council, if it's, at the town council, all right?
Well, Zach will present it.
Yeah. I'll make it clear, all right, thanks for the point.
All right, any further discussion?
The one question.
The, the one question I had is, last time, you had brought up the street next to the library-
On Vine Street, that's the next space.
That's space two, okay?
Next space.
Just one question, are we replicating that in the meantime, you can either pull in or back in?
No.
We're not doing it, okay, just one thing.
That's not in our, that's not our.
So, Phase one is more so to tackle the Mason Avenue, that's the whole.
Right, right. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, so, I need a motion-
Don't make a motion that we accept recommendations one, two, three, and five, with number one being that the final state is a sixty degree angle.
Good. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. So this goes to Town Council. Any new business? Any other visits? Do we have any, do we have any, do we have anything on, on, what's her name, uh, that's gonna be working with us from A and P D C?
I have not seen anything that, okay. I will, I do want to say that we have some accessory dwelling units, we have at least one condition permanent that I can mention.
Really? Okay, so, I, so, some of us are not aware of what's happened here? So, those accessory dwelling units that are already in existence, are they grandfathered?
I would have to look back, but I do believe so, that it would be grandfathered in accessory.
Okay. Uh, I read, I read, I know about what happened with the, the water, so I'm, I'm okay with that. The, uh, there was a, there was a Town Council session last Thursday. I, I read, I read the agenda packet, did the Town Council approve the recommendations that were in that town thing about the Historic District Review Board? Can you?
I have not seen this minute yet.
Oh, no.
No, the staff presented five or six recommendations, we discussed them,
Nothing.
But it's a work session, so there was no final, we did three that would sit down with the whole group.
Okay, I just wanted to know what, what the, basically, the outcome was.
Yeah, that was just information.
Okay. All right. So, do we have an idea when we're gonna start working on the content? Have you talked to the town manager?
I have not, but I'm ready, so.
He's spoken his fruit.
All right.
Marjorie, Marjorie.
Can I go back to accessory dwelling units for a minute? Does a planning commission have to approve that and then send it on to the town, or suggest that it be approved by the Town Council? It's not just the Town Council.
It can actually use for that, and then it has to go to a public hearing, and then, for both of us, and then Town Council passes. We have, we have to approve it, and then it gets to the Town Council.
If the ones that are existing are grandfathered, is there going to be some sort of written report or information as to what they aren't now, so that in the future, they cannot change?
I mean, we, we would just, I think what you're asking, if I'm interpreting it correctly, is we would have a record of that, because people would be coming in for building permits, in order to build or to convert existing structures into accessory structures.
Okay, so no, you're not understanding me, so if I, if I have an accessory building, accessory dwelling unit right now, and it has two bedrooms, and it's not re, and it has two bedrooms and no kitchen, let's say, that doesn't fall within the purview of this.
It does not.
But, will we have anything anywhere that says, this is what we have? This is what it is from this day forward, so that if five years from now, they come back and say, oh yeah, we added a kitchen, we can say, no, 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 you didn't have it, you can't have a kitchen.
So, I guess that would be, that would be guided by this, the minutes of the meeting, and things like that, knowing when, uh, if, if, I feel like I'm, maybe I'm confused as to what you're asking, but-
We can talk after.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, it would have to come with a permit, anyway.
Yeah.
From the kitchen.
That would make it known that you're making an alteration, and then we can engage.
That, that, okay, that's not hard talking about.
Well, even if, even if there's a-
She wants to step in the ground and say, they're paying their dues.
Even if there's an accessory dwelling unit that right now would be, mean all the criteria, except for maybe the water, it may even meet the water, so, it's, it would have to have a conditional use permit, right? To operate as an accessory dwelling unit.
I guess, I'll have to look into that idea.
I, if it's grandfathered in, I would think not, but that it would still have to have some kind of license or-
If, yeah, you'd have, if you were renting it to people, it would be a business license that you'd have to have, obviously.
Yeah, because this all things goes in effect February first.
Yeah.
Anybody that hasn't before, can find, what they'll get now is built.
Was it something like two, like it happened, it was passed for two years, you know, the-
Well, we talked about whether or not grandfathering even occurs there, and at our last meeting, it came down to, no, these people are gonna be built.
That's right.
So they're gonna be surprised.
But there only go half, right?
Yeah.
Unless they're renting to family member or blah blah blah, right?
Well, we did talk about making sure we have a, uh, assessment of all current and moving forward, so there is, you know, a picture, there's a, so, in some light answering your question now, that Zach would be doing kind of a, you know, kind of a overview of what exists, so that then moving forward.
Okay.
I have, I have a question with regards going forward, drawing on my textbook knowledge now. Do we put together a plan of action for this year? What are the things that we're looking to accomplish, complete of you want? Parking, I don't know how far parking, we're gonna try to tackle, but are we gonna put a, a listing together as the things that we should be working towards?
Well, we've never done that, because, I'm sure when you went to the meeting, just like the rest of us have done, except for, you know, it kinda came across that the planning commissions were in charge of the capital improvement program?
Yeah.
Didn't you come across that?
No, like, we talked about that, and yes, sometimes Town Council takes it over, and I still-
I understand, so, so, I mean, and that's, that's really the driver, that's really the driver of the planning commission.
But, but let's, let's just talk, parking, we've tackled Phase One, a plan should say Phase Two, Phase Three, or how far out we wanna go, right? And what the scope should be, right? What are the activities, you know, the high path? Do we wanna get ourselves above the mapping out where we want?
No, I mean, we've never done that in the past, it's always been handled by, uh, really, it's been ha, it was handled by a lot of panic, uh, with, with, with the town manager and the Town Council. Uh, we, we were, we were updated on that, uh, but basically, that, that was all-
We never had any.
We never had any input, that's it.
Okay, but I, I'm just throwing out ideas, I, I don't know what else is going on.
I think, I think the other thing would be, uh, I think something's gonna happen to the harbor this year. So, so, you know, we're, and I know there's a harbor review board, but we have a vested interest, we have a vested interest as a planning commission in the harbor, so, we need to-
Your vested interest was something?
We have a member on the harbor review board.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, that's my question, the harbor review board would go over that, I could come back and say what we did, we don't, yeah, you don't-
No, we, no, no, no. No, what I'm saying is, is as a planning commission, we are the planning commission for the entire town, just like we have, we have, we have a vested interest in Historic District Review Board, you know?
Which the Town Council discussed this last meeting, and you'll get direction here that the planning commission will have to do such as such.
So, I mean, it's just part of our purview, so.
Okay, I just asked the question.
I mean, if you, if you would, if you would, if you would like to, think of some things, if you are the Town Council representative on this board, and you have more, you have more knowledge of what's going on in this town than we do, from that perspective, you could, we'd be glad to have that, I mean, we, you know, usually it's, usually we're more in a reactive-
Yeah, that's what I see, okay, that's, than a proactive.
Yeah, I'll just add to that point, that we have a proactive and a reactive mode, and the proactive is comprehensive plan. Basically, the Town Council gives us a lot of leeway to do the best job we possibly can with that plan. But the reactive part is serving at the pleasure of the Town Council, most every month, there may be something that they want us to do at our very next meeting, and so, they are constantly feeding us with that, plus the conditional use permits, and all the things through town that we have to address, pretty much fills our plate. It's, it's been the last eight years or so, that's been kinda how it's been run, but that doesn't mean something couldn't change.
Okay, all right, thanks. But I, I, I'm sure we, we welcome it. Any other, uh, business? Announcements?
I have an announcement, have you guys congratulated Tracy?
Oh, excellent, congratulations on being a, what, full-fledged servant, right?
Certified official clerk.
There are only three on Northam and, uh, East Shore, and we have two of them.
Was that, was that, was that, uh, online, or did you-
No, I had to go to the west coast. I took classes online from my home, I took the initiative and, and the town.
Well, congratulations.
Very proud of you. And the only, the other one, just to let you know, is a retired clerk from Cape Charles.
So, any other announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn? So, second, in favor?